I'd like to call a regular meeting to order. Please join me for the next meeting.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I am indeed calling the roll.
All present except for Commissioner Seymour, who has an excused absence.
Motion to set the roll. Make the motion, Commissioner.
Question.
Motion, Michael Mitchell Shattler, seconded by Commissioner Teller, to approve the recording of the roll. Any further discussion concerns? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Item C, approval of consent agenda. It's my understanding that we want change. Item two C needs to be removed. Any other changes, I think? I'd make the motion to the figure agenda as presented. Motion, Michael Mitchell Shattler, seconded by Commissioner Teller, to approve the consent agenda as invented. Any further discussion or concerns? Roll call.
Kair.
Yes.
Shattler.
Yes.
Teller.
Yes.
Harper.
Yes.
Item D, see you can place on file from Finance Director. One statement of revenue expenditures and two hundred cash reports.
Thank you. As you know, I was absent at the last meeting of April. We usually receive your March financials, so I'm presenting this tonight. We did receive the check register, which was approved, so just for the two, say, for revenue expenditures and cash for March. Year-to-date should be around seventy-five percent, nine months through, as of the end of March. In the general fund, as we talked a little bit at the workshop, we are going through our amendment process. Budget amendments, most of them will be because of unexpected revenues, like old ones, yeah, unexpected expenditures. One example, here in the general fund, the city center, we had the bathrooms out of our budget before. We did not have available toilets for that, so we're going to do a budget amendment for old revenues and expenditures there. In the general fund, nothing else really to discuss there that we haven't discussed in the past. Period fund balance is very healthy, but a hundred eighty-one thousand plus there. In the major local streets, both those funds are doing okay. We had a lot of activity here in the winter, snow hauling, winter maintenance was high. Did go over our original budget, but we do receive our Act 51 money for those. So the revenue is over budget as well for those activities. We will be doing some reallocating of funds, some of the traffic signs that we had put up. Originally, it was all expensive in the local street fund, but there are a lot of signs that were put on major streets. We'll be reallocating those dollars up to major street funds. The Equipment Fund has seen a lot of activity this winter. That's why you're seeing a big boost in revenues there, eighty-nine percent right now. That's usually how that fund works, little activity, little snow. That fund usually suffers a lot of activity, a lot of rainfall from the other funds. The Water and Sewer Fund are both doing okay. Again, you see the negative period fund balance. That is due to our budgeting of the fund balance for that. Just a reminder, in the Water Fund, we budgeted about $223,000 fund balance. And Sewer, about $450,000 fund balance. So we are on track there. With the Library Fund, again, just a reminder, we receive the penal fines after year-end. Currently budgeting about $33,000 penal fines. So that fund is doing okay. You're seeing the revenues and expenditures both kind of above that seventy-five percent mark, but they are okay. In the expenditure side, they did do some improvements there down in the library, which they do have fund balance for. And they did receive up to fifty grand, four twenty grand. Civic Center, both revenues expenditures above budget, so we do budget amendments for that. They're still healthy. Cemetery, little activity, we will see that going up now, that spring has finally arrived. And just on smaller funds, there are the bottom volunteer fire departments. We had a lot of revenues last year with that, the fire department tournament. Half those funds, I believe it's half, but correct me if I'm wrong, but go to the Agribusiness. Somebody need to check for that. And the last report is the cash balances report. And there's nothing significant to report there with cash balances, I don't think. Any questions?
I'll move to place the March figure of revenue expenditures and then we'll be back for a final.
A second one? Motion by Commissioner Teller, seconded by Commissioner Shattler, to approve the agenda as presented. Any further discussion or concerns? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Item A.
Shattler.
Yes.
Teller.
Yes.
Kair.
Yes.
Harper.
Yes.
Item B, approval of the agenda. Any changes we need to be aware of? Make the motion to the figure agenda as presented.
Question.
Motion by Commissioner Shattler, seconded by Commissioner Teller, to approve the agenda as presented. Any further discussion or concerns? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Item A. Citizens wishing to address the commission on items on the agenda. A three-minute limit, please. And if you are able, please approach the podium and state your name. Any other comments? Okay. Item G, presentation. Michael, Jimmy Brown, the Development Director, update on the American Plank Association National Conference.
Great, thank you. Just kind of wanted to bring you up to speed, give you a little update on a conference I've been at a few weeks ago in Chicago. The American Plank Association, it was a national conference. Every other national conference moved around the country. And this year came with a big event in Chicago, so it was a pleasure to go. Number of sessions, over thirty countries represented at the conference from around the world. Close to fifty-five hundred people in attendance, so it was a very large, well-attended conference. I attended a number of sessions over the five days, but kind of really wanted to focus on two of the main topics that are kind of relevant to what's going on this year now. One is conference planning, and we've been discussing the budget workshops, looking at doing a conference plan. One of the topics of discussion was pre-planning. Really, it's planning, pre-planning before you actually do a conference plan, so that you get people aware of the process, what's going involved, why it's important, and so forth. A number of communities are starting to do this around the country, and they say that it really helps their process, really helps people understand what's going on, why it's important, and really get people engaged and to take ownership of it. So something, a tool that we'll probably want to use here moving forward, and we do budget for that conference plan. Second topic, which went to a number of different sessions on, was economic development. Obviously, with the downturn in the economy over the last couple of years, four or five years, a lot of focus is put toward economic development and what we can do. You know, there's not a lot that we can do on our own, but a lot of it is certainly just by chance. But, you know, going through a number of different sessions, they talk about different things to try to do. Obviously, nothing's guaranteed. You're doing all the right things, you're doing what you're supposed to be doing, trying to attract businesses, retain businesses, but sometimes the economics of it just don't work out. But there was a lot of good information I had obtained from a lot of the sessions. And one of the big things was, that took away from one of the sections, was site select. Getting information out there from commercial industrial sites that are available in your community. Site selectors are acquired by large companies and corporations. They give them their parameters and say, we want to expand, we want to put a new facility somewhere. Here are requirements, go find us a place. So these site selectors use the web, the internet right now. There are a lot of different programs out there where you can, the site selectors can go, enter the criteria for a company, and it'll pop up results if you're in their database. So that's something we've been talking about as well. Site selector program that we can use on our website, that we can advertise, you know, properties that are for commercial or industrial sale, to help those businesses and also the property that's out in our community. With that, I'd answer any questions you might have. Otherwise, it's summary, you've got to report it for me as well.
Any questions for economic development? I believe I've got some good information, the idea of the site selector, and we already have a people waiting to come in. New business. Item H, discuss and consider resolution 013-013, a resolution to support creation of the Bogemic County Recreation Authority to provide for development and operation of the Michigan and Western Gateway Trail.
There's an ongoing effort to continue to develop the regional trail, with a number of steps accomplished already. This would be the non-motorized, they're working on both motorized and a non-motorized trail between our communities. The motorized already exists, but the property isn't necessarily owned by the public yet, they're working on ownership. A non-motorized trail would be in our downtown from Ironwood to Wakefield. The DNR has acquired the old railroad ring, the DNR in Bedlam, that's on their public ownership right now, the DNR does own that. The City of Ironwood has applied for a grant to the DNR to develop that first section of trail through Ironwood. We have been approved for that grant, and we expect that construction to start at the end of this year. Again, we're working with Wakefield, Wakefield Township, Bedlam, Bedlam Township, Ironwood, Ironwood Township, Ridge County, the department with the whole group in this effort. And this resolution tonight is just to show support to take the next step with this regional trail authority. That would be basically an entity that's developed, that is made up of all the member communities. We'd have someone on that board, and would help manage and maintain the trail going forward. The idea with that is that if you have this regional trail that goes through all our communities, you want to make sure it's maintained in good shape, so there's the one community that decides and can't, you know, maintain the trail, and the rest of the member communities are plenty of people back and forth along this trail. So again, this is the resolution to support, let's say, on each of the townships, each of the communities, hopefully for approval. And based on the results of these resolutions, then actually a document would be developed that will formalize this relationship. And then that would be brought to the State Commission for review and consideration. So tonight is the first step towards support for the development of that document.
Any other questions on that? Are there, has any other community that has this come forward with?
They are all working on it, I believe. They're all, in various cases, Wakefield has been addressing it tonight, as we are. I think Wakefield Township, we have largely approved it, talking with each of the city managers or town board supervisors. At least the expectation was that it would be supported across their communities. Again, it's just the end of the year, you know, coverage will be a little long here this week, each of the different communities, so I can't tell you which ones have approved it or not, but anticipation is each of the communities would likely approve it. We'll see after the allocation.
I think it's a busy idea for this gateway, especially since we're in a gateway city.
I agree.
And just long-term, this would provide a way to maintain those trails? Or the long-term plan is that there would be some sort of funding put into this to maintain the trails?
Right, the Recreation Authority would, again, the members of each community township, and then they will look at long-term funding strategies for many of this. Everything from new member communities contributing to, or have some other folks, you know, we have all the different things that they could look at. So the trail is maintained well beyond all of us being here. So there'll be reinvestments, there'll be assets in the community, most of our existing residents, and also growing people in the area, hopefully to utilize it.
And do they create this, just to understand? The authority, would that have like a board that would kind of come together, where you create a board that would...
Correct. Yeah, they're being a board of each of the member communities.
Sounds like a great important thing to, great step to get a motorized and a motorized trail that's coming. So I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number 013-013 as described in item H.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Shattler, seconded by Commissioner Kair, to approve resolution 013-013 as noted in item H. Any further discussion or concerns? Roll call.
Teller.
Yes.
Kair.
Yes.
Shattler.
Yes.
Harper.
Yes.
Item I, discuss and consider planning commission case 2013-001, Delbacke zoning.
Thank you. For tonight is a pre-zoning request by Mr. Delbacke, wants property out of Popple, Bonny Road, and Air Street. This went to the Planning Commission at their last meeting for their review and recommendation. They held a public hearing. Kind of a little background on the case, Mr. Delbacke, and there is a map, if you have it in your packets, they're kind of showing where the area is. The large, there's two large parcels that Mr. Delbacke is requesting to rezone from R1 residential, single-family residential to R3, which is rural residential. His intent is, he'd like to put up a large structure to house his vehicles for his business, as well as to have horses on the property. The re-zoning request came in to do that. One of the issues with the current zoning is the size of the structure that he wants to put out there exceeds the restricted maximum limits in the current zoning district. In addition, horses aren't allowed in the original district. So it's essentially taking the zoning, converting it from single-family residential to rural residential, larger lots, more rural type settings. The Planning Commission reviewed this. They did receive a number of objection letters, which should also be in the packet. They had a number of comments from the public at the meeting as well, I believe. Ten or so people spoke. The majority of them were against the request, with only a couple in favor of the request, including Mr. Delbacke. The Planning Commission did recommend denial of the request unanimously, six to zero, based on the fact that the request was inconsistent with the conference plan. As you can see, the conference land use plan, kind of looking this corner, pointing to it, looking at it. This is where the property is, this MDR is the medium-density residential. That's consistent with the R1, the R2 zoning districts. The R3 district, which Mr. Delbacke is requesting, is consistent with the LDR, the lower-density residential, which is down in this area of the community. So with that, that's kind of a summary of the request, what the Planning Commission recommended. It's up for you to review, discuss, and consider. If you do vote to allow the zoning, to approve it, an official ordinance would be created. They brought it back to you for a formal review and approval. So this is kind of the first, preliminary step moving forward. And with that, I can answer any questions. Mr. Delbacke, the property owner, if you have any questions for him.
So this has to be rezoned to mean the request of the size of the garage that he's hoping to build?
Correct.
How much larger is the garage that he wants to build?
I don't recall off the top of my head.
Thirty-six by thirty-six is for five acres or less. I want to build a sixty-by-one.
The original request, we talked about back in the fall, who's going to request variance, keep the zoning same, request variance based on going over the size of the structure. But then, that's when he decided he wanted to try to have some horses out there, so that was what, why he decided to request the R3 rezoning instead.
Oh, I just want to go over some things that I've, Michael Brown, in April. Okay. I lived, I grew up seven bungalows with my fiance. We, what we wanted to do, this is all vacant land, and we did, I fought, 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 trying to find out who owned it, so we could do something. So I found out, I bought one out of California, I bought one out of lower Michigan, I bought one that would, people would never use. Basically, they bought it off tax option, and that's what they did. And what I wanted to do, and I don't know why the neighbors are so against it, but that's their decision, and that's why I come to you. Okay, I went to Mr. Brown, because I don't know what I'd do. He wanted a variance, and I'd say, well, if I need a variance, if we get a variance for the garage, then I need a variance to drive my trucks in, because they're, the trucks, they're going to buy all my processing here. I should have a variance for that. I didn't want a variance. This is old mining land. Leroy, he come right out and asked me at the Planning Commission, there's sixty-some acres there between mine and another guy's, that's all old mining. Why is it R1? It should have been industrial, it should have never been turned over to R1. I mean, Leroy come out and asked me right out, did anybody talk to you about zoning this industrial? And that's why at the end of the Planning Commission, they turned me down, because I'm asking for the wrong thing. He said right out, George, you're asking for the wrong thing. What you should be asking for is industrial. Because, okay, I got two commercial businesses, I own a logging company and I own a trucking company. What I want to do, I want to use Bonny Road, that ain't being used. They're condemning it, they're going to, I talked to Mr. Hewitt, you just got to hold on it to close it down, or to turn it over to the landowners or whatever. Well, I, that's all out of the way of everybody. We could come into the back way, we don't have to bother them. There's thirty-eight, thirty-five acres of wooded land where I want to build my shop. So people from Newport Heights, people from Bonny Road, people from Air Street, they probably wouldn't see what we got back there, unless they drive up their driveways. I mean, that's the big thing. I mean, I'm here to make everybody mad and all the neighbors mad. I just want to be able to, it's vacant land. I mean, there's twenty-eight acres beside it that ain't being used for nothing. It gets $200 a year tax done. If I put a $150,000 building on there, use do the math. We want city water there, I want it all there. I mean, I want to run my business off of there. It's all, that's, that's why I was happy that you guys would hear me, because, yes, the R3, probably ain't the proper thing what we're asking for. But, I mean, I spent the $300, I didn't know what we needed. I mean, I wish I did, because I would have asked for industrial. But, I mean, me and Mr. Brown, it's, he said right out, it's new for him too. This is one of his first trying to get rezoning. So we were looking it over, and it qualified for our building, it qualified for the Donner's horse. So that's what we went with. Well, we should, I should, I should have read more into it, to see that there's no running water in R3. You can't have no city sewer or water. So that basically, that's why Leroy basically told, told us right out. That's why he shut it down, it didn't happen, you're asking for the wrong thing. So that's why I'm glad that you actually would hear me out. And I'm here, a question that I could show everybody. Okay, this is our area here, right? Is that it? This is it right here, is it my question?
Yes.
Okay. This is the same track as this, this, and this is all mining land. Why is this industrial fifty feet across the road, and this is residential? This is the same, the mine is the same time as this all was, all our land here. I mean, I don't understand how you can have all this mining land, this mining land, this is, this truck's mining land, this is all open mining land, and this is industrial, this is industrial, and this is open land which you need variances, or like where UPS and the county garage, all that stuff is, or the city garage, that's all that. But this is all residential when it's the same piece of road. That's why, that's why I didn't understand, and Leroy's the one who brought it up to me about that, because it's the truth. I mean, you look at it, you've got all that mining land that was turned into residential, when Leroy said, who would want to build a whole sum iron ore? I mean, that's basically what it is. And people ask me, well, why would you want a $150,000 shop on there in just a case of sinkholes? I said, that's a chance I'm willing to take, because it's a perfect spot for my distance. I mean, we haul wood up to Cokey, Minnesota, we haul wood to Iron Mountain, Michigan, we haul wood to Wisconsin Rapids. This is a beautiful base for my distance. So that's why I'm just asking you guys, if you can relook at this, and see what we could come up with on rezoning.
Well, I think my thinking, it's probably not a rezon industrial, because nobody was going to build on it, because the ground is not stable to build, which probably wasn't open, exactly.
No, 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 it ain't open, it's sold out by, that's the difference. It was on industrial.
And then it's changed to...
Residential.
But nobody can build on it, because the ground is not...
Well, why is it residential?
We don't know, it's just no more, I'm no more at this point, I guess, I'm sorry. Where you want to put up this building, it's higher up on the hill, so I don't think it's in the actual paving area.
How far back up to the road are you looking to build?
Like I said, you won't even see the building where I want to put it.
Almost right the hill.
Almost right, almost right the hill, if you go back, you got the, the colored one. Right there, okay, see? This is right over where we wanted to put the building. So you would have to, with the leaves on the trees, you'd have a hard time seeing it here. You've got all this wooded, you'd have a hard time seeing the distraction, and you ain't going to see the distraction, or you've got to spend it in my property to see the other.
Do you plan to come up by your team?
Yep, yep, here or here, either one.
So then you have to build a road into the center?
Yeah, yeah, and it just, there's an, actually, there's a four-wheeler trail here, and if I did get this rezoned, I could buy this place. I talked to the landlord from lower Michigan that bought it on tax option, that I could buy this whole twenty acres. So I could own the whole block. So then we just basically have this trail right here, come straight into where we want to build, and we come straight up on here.
Is that what you, excuse me, is that what you presented to the Planning Commission then?
But, yep, but it was R3. See, that's where, that's where this whole thing went off the board, because Leroy did his homework reading on R3. And R3 don't qualify me for what I want to do. Because it, there's no running water, I can't, they can't be a commercial business in it, not unless it's farm, farming, or something like that. So that's why it don't meet my qualifications, is what we're doing, and that's why they turned it down. I mean, because basically, for what I was asking for, they said, no, you're asking for the wrong thing.
I have a question from Michael. If this was zoned industrial, would he have issues with his purpose garage?
I don't know if that, and to review the industrial requirements. When the original request came in, my understanding was it was a garage to houses, vehicles for his, for his business, which is acceptable, you know, if you want to put a garage to...
Not by Leroy's thing, though, because we are a commercial business. Yes, this is what me and Michael looked at, but in the end, we found out that, being that I run a commercial business, Mike, it says Delbacke Transport on the side of the truck, and Mike couldn't go to work in the woods every day, that's a commercial business. If I haul that into my garage, if something breaks, I haul it into work on it. I ain't hiring working, I don't got Delbacke repair or nothing. It's just, I'm still hauling in a commercial building, a business, to work on it in my garage. Which, but that's why we looked at it this way, but they put it in our eyes that the Planning Commission did, for me... planning commission did, for me anyways, that if it's gonna be a commercial business, it should be zoned industrial or commercial or something on that board.
When I, I, excuse me. When I reviewed their request, um, my, my view is if, whether he's bringing in a personal vehicle or a vehicle from his business to store in the garage, that's acceptable in residential districts. That's no different than, you know, if you're a police officer and you park your patrol vehicle at your house, it's not your business, but you're using your company vehicle and parking it there all night. As long as he's not operating his actual business, his logging business out of, out of the property, it's not an issue being residential. Now, if he wants to operate out of his prop- out of the property as a business, then it would be, you know, an industrial zoning. And even with an industrial zoning, it's still not consistent with the capitol plan. So, I don't know what the planning commission would've done, but they didn't approve the rezoning because it was, it wasn't consistent with the capitol plan. So whether it's the R3 zoning or industrial zoning, it's still inconsistent with the capitol plan.
I got one more thing. Okay, now we got a lot of contractors around here. Now, he's talking about bringing your business, working out of your homes for, if I worked off the property, my business, okay? We got lots of contractors that work out of your homes. Now, shouldn't they be zoned industrial if that's the case? They're working a commercial business out of their home. I mean, so that's what Michael just said about it. So if I'm, if I can't bring my machine there and work on it, basically, it, it don't, it's, the thing is, it, a person's trying to bring money to Iron Mountain. I mean, this is what I wanna do. It ain't because I didn't spend the forty thousand on the land to have these guys telling me, "Oh, you ain't doing it," and pack up and move out. I mean, we got four kids that go to school in the city. I mean, that's gonna be four to six thousand dollars a year tax revenue on a hundred, a hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar building. Now you get three hundred.
Well, I guess I, I would agree with the planning commission's decision. With all the number of people that, that were worried about this, that are neighbors, you would really need to have a plan that they would be comfortable with. If, if the neighborhood is uncomfortable with, with what your plan is, it's, it's very difficult to do that.
But I don't think it was in three hundred feet of the property!
Well, I'm sorry, but that, that is what I feel, and also that I, I do think there's an important, comprehensive plans have a reason, and that, that is, one of the reasons they're there is, is so that we plan in a way that, that the community agrees with. And I think this would be going against what the community in that area really wants there as, as a, as whole.
Well, we did have an area earlier in the agenda that citizens were able to address the commission on items on the agenda. I'm just looking through some of my agenda, assuming most of you are here for this item. I guess I'd like to, if at all possible, if somebody would like to speak either for or against this project, I'd like to hear what some neighbors have to say.
Uh, my name is Bogdan Rosicich, I'll firm Mr. Delback one-hundred percent. What that man is gonna do to that useless piece of property, it is totally useless. It's a piece of garbage property. He's not gonna come off the Bonnie Road, he's gonna go to Iron King. That's where he's gonna go, and that's a useless street, yous are closing it off. He's trying to do something, he's trying to improve our community. He's putting, he's putting a building here, he's putting a two-hundred-thousand-dollar building up at his property, he could have more than that. He's doing it with his own money, not like these other people that came to you and asked for money, you're not what he's stuck with. You, you're stuck with the bill, the city's stuck with the bill. This man is doing it with his, with his own money, not city money. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak?
I mean, John Wobles from, and I object, we have letters of objection, I'm sure you and Regis are all over. We all object to having a commercial business running in our area. We object to having horses. For horses, you can go take some towels and wherever you want, it's your own. And we don't want logging trucks to, to have consequences of commercial business. If we're marrying a little logging truck, it's still a repair business. And we don't want a business born industrial or even a...
More questions?
I just have a couple of questions, Madam Mayor. First of all, I've lived in that area for sixty-six years, and I've seen mining cabins. You don't have to walk far from the southwest corner of right property to see sinkholes four feet wide and five feet deep. Will this, I just wanna ask a question, will this increased logging traffic affect those sinkholes that they will get worse? And second, Mr. Delback says that he's gonna repair his vehicles there. Is he just gonna repair his vehicles or is he gonna do processing there? And the sec- third, last question is, he's already running a commercial business out of Bonnie Road, is that zoned for commercial business?
Any other problems? Mister's have more information there? Can you ask for your development person, Mr. Delback?
Well, I think I know two minds. The one is, if you were to build this garage, what's your timeframe? I mean, when would you start construction?
I had everything worked, it started last week.
And on the other side, if I live in the neighborhood, I probably wouldn't want law trucks driving back...
But they're going down a road that, it's vacant, the road is vacant. Iron King Hill is walked off. The road is vacant driving down it. You build in there, there's a rock on one end and nobody can get through.
And would you plan on doing the processing there or just repairs to your vehicle?
Our equipment is...
Would you plan to park it there, work on it, and be on your way?
Our machines are home three weeks a year. Okay, this time of year, with our logging equipment, we haul it in, we work on it. I don't make no money if the machines are sitting at the shop. The trucks are sitting at the shop. Our home, our trucks are home probably two, three, three nights a week on seven days. Otherwise, basically what we're doing is we're gonna supply, if the truck pulls a tire, you drive in, you change the tire, the truck pulls it back on the road. Our logging equipment, we haul it in, we break stuff, we fix it in the shop, we put it back on the lowway, goes back to the woods. The, we ain't doing no process, we ain't having sawmills, we ain't having all that stuff there. Basically, we're driving in, we're unloading, fixing it, putting it back in the machine, and we're back in the trailer and the vehicle goes back home. That's what we're doing.
Want commissioners? Thoughts, action, any other questions to you guys?
I'm not quite sure where you're going with this. To be quite honest, I don't know if I'm really...
One more, everybody that signed the objection letter, one of the three reasons, it was a devaluation prop- what would that do to a property evaluation, having a repair, stations in backyard, trucks running up and down through the hills, running on Bonnie Road, that would devalue the property?
He's not gonna go on Bonnie Road, he's gonna do Iron King. That's the entrance, get it out.
Okay, and then would you guys get into fighting at this point here, what some of the comments were, commissioners?
The thing is, is Ironwood ready mix drives up and down Bonnie Road all day. Glo drives up and down Bonnie Road, and they're worried about mining trucks that are open, maybe on weekends.
I guess also, it's, it is, I mean, it's zoned for residential, I think there's a reason for that, there are residents there that would be affected. So I think, you know, looking at what the comprehensive plan says is, is very important. And listening to, you know, if it's, if people feel that it's gonna impact them negatively, that's an important thing to consider.
Thing is, if people feel that your house will look good, call Blight, who drive up Iron, or Newport Heights, they talking about Blight under paper, half the houses are Blight up there.
Any more information, W D? I know, I, I think it's, you know, I kind of agree with Commissioner Shachefrideric that it's important to listen to the planning commission, and we have seen a lot of citizens speak up that they're not for this project, so there seems to be a lot of negativity. So I'm not sure if that commission wants to take an actual asylum tonight or if we need any information.
If the plan could be modified somehow, would there be any way to appease the neighborhoods? I mean, if we're saying, no horses, no animals?
No. So do I hear any action with item L or item R? Okay, no action, that'll take us to item J. Discuss and consider one of the bits to televise approximately a hundred-and-fifty meter feet of sanitary, sanitary and storage sewer.
This is a standard process, um, for less destruction projects, we do hire and outside company to come and televise. Sanitary and storage pipes to determine what kind of shape they are in. We can receive three bids, three competitive bids for this Great Lakes pipe service, it's got its period, it's a volunteer, they told me it was six-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. And now this will be for televising, you know, pipes on US 2, piping on Morris Street, various locations throughout town. And then we can ask all of us in our design to work with your projects. Our commission is to award the bid to Great Lakes.
I'll make the motion to award the bid for, followed by the Secretary of State.
My second thought? Motion by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner Shachefrideric, to approve the bid in relation to Great Lakes pipe service, uh, here a margin of six thousand more than five dollars. Any further discussion of concerns? No comments?
Taylor?
Yes.
Shachefrideric?
Yes.
Tower?
Yes.
Harpring?
Yes.
I have K discuss and consider one of your bits for the water meter reading contract?
Oh, we do have a contract, a water meter reading service, um, in the state. And our contract, uh, figured out, so we go up for, uh, four bids. And we had four bidders that, that are charging to the, uh, the bid request. The, uh, O bidder was a Little Bear construction. They have a meter reading, uh, price of twenty-seven-five-five-four cents per meter. And again, they rent monthly and they read about a hundred-three thousand meters, two-thousand eight-hundred-and-sixty meters every month, on a monthly basis. So again, you have a little bid, we did have four bidders, um, the current contractor is red construction, um, they do that a little bit earlier this, uh, recent bid set went out. And this would be a two-year contract, and the second year is a three percent cost of the bid, but the added to this bid amount. And you can see the total bid, if you look on the right hand side, the total bid for Little Bear is twenty-five-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars and twenty-eight cents annually. He just paid for every meter he reads.
Would the bits seem appropriate to you then?
I need to...
Make the motion to, uh, award the bid, uh, the water meter reading contract to Little Bear Construction. Motion by Commissioner Shachefrideric, second by Commissioner Tower, to award the bid for those water meter reading contracts with Little Bear Construction. Any further discussion or concerns? No comments?
Shachefrideric? Yes. Tower?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Just item L, discuss and consider authorizing advertisements to bid for installation of fencing for the development of the city softball field.
This is a grass trees group that is helping draw the softball field, over by the Little Lake field, that's a city property up there. It's, uh, citywide fields. And, um, this group has done a lot of fundraising. Uh, they've done a lot of work to that field already. They cleaned up the site, uh, and they graded it, they brought in top soil, um, they're seeded this spring. And their next step is to, uh, go for bids and they get fencing for it. Again, the money isn't there yet, they're out, uh, fundraising for this. They wanted to take a step of going out and getting bids, so they know the dollar amount, and then assuming their funds, again, we couldn't award unless the funds did come in, but they are working with a number of different companies, entities, um, in the city to try to get that funding. So if, if authorized, we can hopefully put the other bid step for the fencing, go for bids, bring those bids back. Again, it could be awarded until funding is there.
Who utilizes it, this, uh, this is a Little League field, is it?
This would be a softball field, it'll be utilized by all the different groups, but primarily softball. Uh, mostly girls softball, people have a little bit of games on there. Right now, my understanding is a Little League field. We have both, and some free access space on a Little League field for more games to improve. And there are no separate softball field also, but they could also be used for Little League also.
And have they made a plan for that, done yet, of some sort?
I'll make it a day, and actually, I think Paul M. Henry helped them put together a site plan for that. They did, uh, come up with a plan with that field, it's been in there, and, um, how it would fit in there and how it'd be graded. And I've been through the process, they leave the redo process. And, um, again, the site's been graded, um, top soil, a little bit seeded here, and how it's got infrastructure, fencing, that type of thing, is their next step.
And in that plan, is there, is this two trails, is this one trail goes through there and also miners and water, and you're carpet, have a trail through there?
Correct, the trail goes through the backside of that area. They had, they had looked at that, make sure they do accommodate that trail through there. What the real idea was to do, you know, before they go any further on with, um, the miners group, by, I mean, Commissioner CMO has looked at it, it was a product that concerned also. Just to make sure that, um, everybody's, um, needs are being addressed and, you know, it's not obvious, I may have, we can look at that, and further details with, with both groups.
And I, I haven't heard of said Parkson Rec, um, has it run with Parkson Rec or?
I'll go back to look, my recollection is when they first did their site plan and they went through the process, Park and Rec, again, the planning commission, but I'm gonna have to look back and double check, um, that to make sure.
That'd be if you'd use it all?
It was, it was a while ago, that was, um, at least a year ago, maybe longer.
Well, it'd be, I think it'd be good for them to get updated and, and make sure that that trail, that city trail, especially if the trails are through there.
Absolutely, we put that on the Park and Rec agenda, again, where that's at, where the property is at.
But I do think it's really good to get a second, um, field there, it seems like they're lacking a bit of the nice enough, so, so, and overall, it's a great project.
Well, I'll make the motion to authorize the advertisement to bid for fencing at the softball field.
My second thought? Motion by Commissioner Tower, second by Commissioner Shachefrideric, to authorize advertisement to bid for installation of fencing for the development of the city softball field. Any further discussion or concerns? All those in favor? I, I oppose, motion carries. Item L, discuss and consider approving final payment in the salt storage building.
Again, our project is completed, um, we're waiting, we got it out of our change order at door to that facility. Door been completed and installed, so we are recommending, uh, final payment. Again, this has to be reviewed by Michigan Department of Transportation also, they have light and signature, they have all the funding for the project, so they'll review it, but the project's complete, we'll recommend giving out final payments.
The project's up to standing, social standing, do I see what I want?
Um, yes.
I'll make the motion to approve final payment for the salt storage building.
Second.
Any more information, no, and a motion?
No, just authorization of final payment.
Motion by Commissioner Shachefrideric, uh, second by Commissioner Taylor, to approve the final payment for the salt storage building. Any further discussion or concerns? No comments?
Tower?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Shachefrideric? Yes. Harpring?
Yes.
And, and then a news report?
Just two items to cover, again, one, correct, and I, and the City Commission, we went through all the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, response that we had, you know, in the past week, uh, just a lot of people, like, you know, like to help lift that, help sanday, help, uh, prepare sandays. And we had, uh, city staff, volunteers, high school, you know, DC, you know, a lot, a lot of people had helped out, um, worked, uh, very... well with our neighbor community, the city of Hurley, Iron Towne, both DOTs, Wisconsin, Michigan, Bridges, it was kind of quite a complicated little process, but everything turned out very, very well, and it was to be expected in a situation like that. Again, hats off to all the people that helped out with that, also recognizing, we had special efforts, we had people that were involved in it back in two thousand and two, the flood, we weren't playing as bad, luckily, as two thousand and two flood, and we had a couple individuals that lived through it, worked through it, built the embol, Louise Gavasi, who actually lived through it, and worked through it, and they provided a lot of insight to us, as we were trying to figure out exactly what to do, where to go with sand eggs, that type of thing. And also, we had a very good partnership with the prison, there was effort, we brought over sand, and we have, there's still a lot of sand eggs that worked out extremely well, a quick response, and I think we found a tool for the future, if we ever needed to help with that kind of quick response, so, again, hats off to, hats off to everybody that stepped up and helped out, there are people that wait twenty or thirty hours, time without going home, you know, to keep that effort going, so. Two other things, project related, we do have people parked starting, you talk about the penal, they're building their equipment, they're working on the building construction right now, they're starting the site development this week, so they are moving along, keeping that project moving forward, and looks like the weather, hopefully, will be cooperating with them. Playing their construction with more lessons back to town, just so you guys know that, they do have some crew that came in this week, they're trying to erase some ant holes around the home, getting prepared for some additional asphalt paving, they have some settlements that they have to fix, in certain areas, so again, they're working back in the area, and we'll be working with them to get the project wrapped up this spring.
When is the estimated completion date for that?
Turned over to Mike, you recall our June fifteenth? June fifteenth? Thank you.
I somehow don't know what's going on.
There's a lot of cleanup work here, absolutely. We met with Northwood Paving, they got our contract for our local street paving, we got some additional streets to pave, we can use through those, and they'll be mobilizing back into town at the end of the month, first of the week in June, so to see some additional paving activity occurring throughout town within about a month. Or this past weekend, the art place group brought in, she's the director of the art facility, and they have a real good presentation, she came in, they spent a long time, give some guidance to the group, and they developed that art place, and moved that forward, again, that group has a lot going on with different activities they've already had, things they're planning for the summer, their classes, they rented some spaces in the building, so they have a really good momentum going, with, and the recommendations on, you know, to think they can do to keep that momentum going and go in the right direction. So they had a good group out there, it was a Saturday effort, and they had a really good core group that, I think, got some guidance from her. Our spring cleanup day, the opportunity for people to bring things and drop them off in their dumpsters is this time of weekend, we rescheduled from last weekend due to the weather, so this Saturday, May eighteenth, is our spring cleanup day, drop off day in town, from eight to eleven, over off of Air Street, in the park lot next to the gas company, where they have their years, so we're just trying to get everybody aware of that, and that goes in the paper. Again, usually a pretty well responded to event for the community, and a good way for people to get rid of things in the yard, and completely tidy up their properties. This weekend too, on Sunday, for anybody that's a bicycle rider, they have the GoRide Year, GoRide or Rain Ride, and it does this for a number of years, it's a bicycle event, you kind of move or bicycle in the area here. This year, they're gonna be going from Des Moines to Ironwood, and that's on Sunday the nineteenth, and they do a bicycle ride, and they have some food with it, just a nice community event, that's at one p.m. on Sunday, and we'll start at Des Moines, come by Ironwood, and that, and they switch that around every year, and then next year they'll start, I would...
Where do they meet, where do they go?
Um, Del, should we meet in Des Moines?
No, they meet, they come by Ironwood.
I believe, I'm gonna have to double check, they usually go to Murray Park, but I'm gonna have to double check that, make sure the park's ready. You can go into Murray Park, get arrested, and go out. And then on Thursday, I understand, Aquinas group, they have their annual pancake breakfast, you wanna make sure we're aware of that, and all of them support Aquinas, they support all the other kids and events in the community, and this is one of their big fundraisers, so come on out on Thursday and have some pancakes and support the Aquinas group, and where is that gonna be, is that at?
At Canellies.
At Canellies? So, we'll make out, come on, enjoy that event. That's it, I remember.
Oh, on the manners.
Can I touch briefly on the street bond remainder in the night? Do you know what streets are going to be paying for that, or how far we can stretch that?
We have about two hundred thousand dollars, and I wish I had my map here, it's generally the area of, will be, the backside of, just about, if you know, that area, main road coming in will be paved, and then we'll have to see where we're going to go there, it's gonna be, basically, that's where they're laying pavement, and we're gonna keep track of monitoring, and see how far we can get, that's generally the neighborhood that we'll see some actual...
Bond road?
Yes, somewhere like that. It's primarily, and it'd be weighted to some of the other more residential roads, but by expanded, so, the bond road right there.
I'll just piggyback on what you had mentioned, just thanks to all the volunteers, you have the prison, and the staff that we work with here, public safety, you know, who went from sandbags one day, and told us no the next day, and catching hot pills a couple of days after, that's why I just appreciate all the volunteers that we had to kind of take care of this, who came all, okay? Also, I want to thank public safety too, with the drugs in the area, really appreciating the efforts of the joint team, working, yeah, taking care of things, that's great that we're not gonna happen. And I would just like to ask the commission if they would excuse me for the May twenty-eighth meeting.
I'll make a motion to excuse Mayor Crawford from the twenty-eighth meeting in May.
Any further discussion or concerns? I oppose, twenty-two minutes, thank you, yes? Any other others?
One thing I can mention is, the dump at our place and behind the theater are gonna have, could you guys come on Thursday, on a field trip to the theater, and they'll do a project, a project, and then, a little things after there.
Mayor also in for the park, sorry. There's more on there, there's part, there'll be some tree planting on Sunday, from ten to three, or ten to noon, so if anyone is interested in planting some trees, you can leave that red devil trail, which is the best. Yes, okay. Item P, citizens wishing to invest in commission on items not on the agenda, a five minute permit, please, and if you are able, please approach the court of investigation.
Yeah, I'll look, I'll be up again. Superior Street, is that in the, is that a plan to, to fix it?
Superior Street, north of US?
North of US two. The main, the main hall coming from Ironwood Township.
Right, so there's a little section, I think, there's a block in there that, uh...
They were curried markets in front of Fairgrounds.
Yep, there's a block in there that wasn't paved, there's a watering that needs to be replaced, we had paved, I think, a few years ago, the bulkhead area, that area just still needs a watering replacement, I have a recollection why that one block in there, or whatever, two blocks, I think, was not paved.
Okay.
Not what it was a bigger project, but we got, we got the two on the schedule.
Good, and one other thing is, the police are doing their best, they're busting their deals off to try to clean this area up, with these meth labs, and go, are they gonna send a letter to our prosecuting attorney, are they gonna send a letter to the judges to lock these low life sub? Matt's sentence, no plea bargain. We need to clean this area up, it's hurting our schools, it's hurting our kids, the kids when they're born, they don't even have a chance because of what the mothers are doing to themselves. We need to lock these people up for a long time, and they're, and they're, they're being imported in here, and they're doing this, they're doing these meth labs, and these prescription drugs, and so forth and so on, and when it comes to go with the county in Ironwood, it has, they said that if you do this, you are gonna go away for a long time. So I'm just asking, would the city commission be willing to send a letter, say, lock these people up for a long time, don't plea bargain? That's it, thank you.
Obviously, I couldn't tell you that, but it's not the way it works, the cards they have, their way they're doing, like, the police want, like, the happenings, or...
Oh, they're doing a great job, they're busting their tails off doing this, they're good, it's terrific.
Anybody else who's too, you speak?
I have something that, just a question pertaining to the involvement, rezoning.
This area is...
What does no action mean, Jeff?
No, we're not taking any action, nothing's being done, we need to prove that.
It's just, not...
Nothing happened. Right. Any else? Item Q, adjourned it. Motion by Commissioner Shacheford, and by Commissioner Towers, to adjourn the meeting, any further discussion or concerns? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much.